Back to order. Amy, could you please lead us in the flag?
[inaudible] The United States of America and to the Republic, the Constitution stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. The first item on the agenda is a special presentation of proclamations regarding the 20th anniversary of our Dublin Community Recreation Center. Is Tracy Gee with us? Good evening, Tracy. How are you?
[inaudible]
I guess over there at the podium. Okay. Whereas on July 19th, 1996, the city of Dublin dedicated the Dublin Community Recreation Center to the Dublin community to be -- to provide quality education opportunities and to foster fitness, well-being, and fellowship. And whereas from the beginning, the DRCRC would set the standard for suburban recreation centers in central Ohio, and was envisioned as more than just an athletic facility, but also as a community gathering space. And whereas almost immediately after its opening, membership figures quickly exceeded expectations and construction soon began on Phase Two, which was dedicated in February of the year 2000, and included the addition of the Abbey Theatre of Dublin, classrooms, a community hall, and senior town lounges. And whereas over the past 20 years, the REC Center has recorded more than 8 million visits and served residents with the highest levels of customer service and received equally high community survey satisfaction ratings. And whereas in its 20-year history, the Dublin Community Recreation Center has won more than 50 awards for facility design, operations, and programming, and has maintained the industry standard Commission for Accreditation of Park and Recreation Agencies accreditation to ensure best practices. Now therefore, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the city of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim Friday, October 14th, as Dublin Community Recreation Center Day in the city of Dublin, and encourage everyone to continue to enjoy the programs, services, and facilities of the DRCRC, which has contributed greatly to the quality of life in our community, as well as the health and well-being of our citizens. So, congratulations. Thank you for coming.
[inaudible]
You want to say a few words?
Thank you.
Please.
Got a couple of the REC Services staff members here to join me in our celebration.
Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. On behalf of all Recreation Services staff, I would like to thank this council and all councils that came before it. Council and the citizens of Dublin have always been so supportive of the Recreation Center and Recreation Services. Not only does that support result in great amenities for residents, but it also results in wonderful career opportunities for hundreds of people like us, and for that, we are forever grateful. My strongest memory of our grand opening in 1996 was a look of sheer awe that was on the face of just about everyone that entered. People knew that we were a REC -- that we were opening a Recreation Center, but at the time, no one knew what a leisure pool was or what a lazy river was, and all the other modern amenities being developed that are commonplace now. It is a credit to the strong pairing of council leadership and staff expertise that has been a hallmark in the way that we do business. Visionary leadership that provides the community with something spectacular that they didn't expect that becomes something they couldn't live without. And who better to explain that than one of our 20-year members? Mr. Wayne Roush is a Dublin resident living in River Forest. Come on up, Wayne. He's been a member of the REC Center since 1996. He works out at the Recreation Center every morning. He's a member of the Dublin Senior Citizen Group, and he is a valued volunteer.
Welcome, Mr. Roush. You wanted to say a few words?
Please. Hello. It's important for senior citizens, retired people, to have a place to exercise their mind and their body, and I think that the DRCRC meets that opportunity very well. My wife, Jo, and I joined the REC Center when it opened 20 years ago, and every morning, when in town, I work out at the Dublin REC Center gym for about an hour and a half. If we get to doing too much socializing, which is part of, you know, keeping your mind active, it might be two and a half hours. As of today, I've worked out 4,316 times at the REC Center. Occasionally through the years, I've worked out at other gyms in the Dublin area, especially like when the REC Center is closed for 10 days in late August for maintenance, and also on weekends when I need to work out before it opens. And I can work out at those gyms at no cost through the Silvish Sneakers Program, but I much prefer to work out at the Dublin Gym. And it's almost free because a senior citizen, Dublin resident, is $100 a year. So, that's like 35 cents a time or something. Jo and I also belong to the Senior Citizens Club, which offers a wide variety of programs and activities. If you look through your program book here, there are 10 pages of the activities and so forth. Today, we had a potluck that filled the tellers, all three tellers there at the REC Center, and there's all kinds of programs. And of course, I mentioned the senior citizens. This is also full of programs and activities for all ages, from preschool on up. We also take some classes at the REC Center. We attend some Abbey Theater programs. As you can tell, the DRCRC is an important part of our lives. In my opinion, the DRCRC is an excellent choice, an excellent use of taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roush.
Then we have some cake for after the meeting.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations to everybody.
Yeah. I'd like to make a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
And just say this, and I think we've got to reflect on this, how progressive our city really was, because the city felt it was really important that everybody have a healthy lifestyle. And I got to compliment, I think Joel Campbell and Chuck Krantz-Dubers were two of the driving personalities back then to decide to have a REC Center. And it was such a novel idea that no other city had a REC Center, and the city had the fortitude and the foresight to drive that idea and execute it, and it put so much pressure on other cities and the other suburbs around us who really didn't have REC Centers. And to this day, many of them still don't have them, and I'm just proud of the fact that those city council members and staff that went ahead, way ahead of anybody else in the business of government, and created a REC Center here. And it just shows how much they cared about the citizenry and their health.
Thank you, John.
Great group.
And I've been really impressed with Tracy Matt, and as this facility ages, being able to keep the programming going while you're fixing things and improving things and retrofitting things and all that. So, I know it takes a tremendous amount of staff effort to do that, but thank you for all that you guys do. Anybody else? Okay. I'd like to ask Greg Ruff, the president of Dublin Quanis, to come forward. We have a special presentation with the Amtrike program.
I'm actually not Greg Ruff. I'm Walt Bus. I'm the immediate past president of Dublin Quanis, and this program covered last fiscal year. So, this is probably the last Amtrike that will be presented in Ohio this year, this fiscal year. I'd like, first of all, to introduce the other Quanis members here. Greg Ruff is our present -- our current president.
Greg, how are you?
Good.
We have Faith Levine, who is our club secretary. Clay Rose is our club treasurer, and then we have two members, Zach Petrie and Jeff Chan, are members also. We at Dublin Quanis, presenters of the famous Dublin Frog Jump, running for 50 years this year, are proud to give this Amtrike to A.J. Emmig. He's here.
Hello.
Can we get him to ride that thing right in?
Can he ride the trike in?
Bring it on in.
[inaudible]
Box the chair.
There we go.
Good evening.
That is an Amtrike.
Look at that.
Wow. Very nice.
So, can you introduce the family and tell us about them?
Well, I'm Jerry Emmig, and I'm the dad of A.J. and my wife, Jody.
Hi, Jody. How are you?
We're Dublin residents. We can all talk over here.
29 years.
And we, I'll just, since we're here, we've got this.
Since we got the mic, we're both so proud to live in Dublin and live in a school system that is so welcoming and accommodating and simply wonderful for special needs children like -- and people like our little A.J. We wouldn't want to live any other place.
Yeah, thank you so much. It's a great gift. I'm sure the school will really, really appreciate having this. It's a fancy piece of equipment. I wish I had one.
You're welcome.
And it's a really an honor for us to be able to stand in to receive this. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Now, just two weeks ago, we presented the 69th Amtrike at Scottish Corners Elementary to the Dublin school system, and so this is the 70th Amtrike that's given to all -- given by all Quanis clubs in Ohio this year as part of the Ohio Quanis Governors Project, and we think it's very worthwhile.
[inaudible]
Go ahead. Take it on out, A.J.
[applause]
[inaudible]
That bike is actually going to go to a fellow by the name of Zaid, who is out of the country right now, but when he gets back in, he will appreciate that bike. Thanks. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Great, surely. Thank you very much, and thanks for coming in. The whole family, Greg. Hey, Clay, I heard Judge Vanderkar's moved back to Dublin, so your ace frog catcher might be back in business.
Hey, and Walter and the group, I, you know, there's great things in America. There's apple pie, the flag, but you know, if you think about Mark Twain, and nothing's cleaner, more innocent, and cooler than a frog jump. And you guys perfected that, and I'm so proud that our city has that, and I haven't seen it anywhere else except for in the works of Mark Twain. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for everything you do for the community. Okay, citizen comments. Anyone have any comments, items they'd like to comment on that are not on the agenda? I don't believe anyone signed in. If anyone is here that would like to comment, please just raise your hand. Otherwise, we will move on to the consent agenda. Does any council member like -- would any council member like to have any single item removed to the -- from the consent agenda? Hearing on, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Ann?
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Members, crash walls behind those metal panels. ART recommended those be dyed to match the brick facade. ART also recommended, conditioned their approval that the applicant work with staff to create a more random pattern with those metal panels so they weren't quite as uniform as presented. Planning Commission, ART moved the case forward to the Planning Commission given the magnitude of the changes. Planning Commission heard that case, heard the proposal on the 15th of September and voted to disapprove it. And the applicant has since requested this appeal of counsel. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding that piece of the business.
What was the purpose behind the changes?
I'm sorry?
What was the purpose behind the changes that are being requested?
The applicant is here and can speak to that in more detail, but it was principally driven by cost.
Have there been any changes to the proposal from the last time that Planning and Zoning Commission saw it to what we see before us here this evening?
No, there hasn't.
So, just so I understand and maybe frame this, our only decision, Jennifer, is whether or not we want to entertain the idea of the appeal.
Correct.
Not to decide for it or against it. And if we do entertain the appeal, nothing we say is binding upon that subsequent vote. Like, I could vote to entertain the appeal and then a vote against reversing the...
Absolutely.
And when it, if we were to entertain the appeal, you said that we could reverse it, we could modify it, or otherwise something else. Can we, could we refer back to P&amp;Z for further investment, further flushing out these issues?
That's something we could explore, and we could have a list of options available for you when you review the case at the appeal, if you determine to hold it.
I had a question, Vince, on the three recommendations from the ART. The third one seemed to do with signage that didn't necessarily have anything to do with the screening business.
That is correct. The renderings that were submitted for consideration included signage on the garage that's part of the master sign plan. It was a technical staff recommendation to say, just remove those aspects of the drawing from the renderings because they weren't pertinent to...
Okay, so there would someday be signs that...
Yes.
But just not in the proposals?
Exactly, exactly. Separately, a master sign plan has been approved by the Planning Commission governing all signage within Bridge Park.
I got you. That one just didn't seem to fit with the other three, and I was just curious about that.
So, the other two recommendations from ART, do you know if it's the developers, or maybe they can answer this question, intention to make some modifications to those renderings prior to coming to an appeal? Or would they leave them the same? If we were to vote to hear the appeal, do you see what I'm saying?
Given the progress of the case, what's before you as a disapproval by the Commission, I think it would be in counsel's wherewithal to decide whether or not to add those conditions back to an action if you chose to approve the proposal.
Wouldn't we be, wouldn't we want to hear the appeal based on the merits of the case that the Planning and Zoning Commission heard? If we start introducing new things, it's no longer an appeal, it's a new judgment.
That's sort of my point of my question.
Right. This, the appeal process in Bridge Street is a little different because it explicitly says that you cannot own, you can consider the record and everything below, but you can also consider additional evidence and testimony. So, it's a more expansive review than you're typically used to, the way it's drafted.
So, Amy, you weren't at that meeting, you were out, out of country or whatever at that particular juncture.
Correct.
Do you have any thoughts on this?
I liked the garage the way it was. I liked particularly the metal panels. The green wall, I sort of always wondered how that was going to work. How are you going to get, you know, four stories of live vegetation? So, I guess I wasn't as surprised about that, but the metal panels, in my view, were really going to set this garage apart. We were going to light it from below, and that was going to be, you know, something that's going to make this more than a parking garage. And, you know, we said when we were building these garages, we didn't want a standard-issue parking garage anywhere in Bridge Street. We wanted to do things to...
We would have the opportunity, it sounds to me like, to accept part of it, not all of it, et cetera. So, it sounds like we're headed in the direction of hearing this thing.
I guess I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of hearing it, purely for the fact if we have, if we start hearing appeals based on cost overruns of projects, we're going to have to schedule a lot of meetings because...
Before we get too far down that road, maybe, Nelson, do you want to comment? Come on up.
But while Nelson is approaching, I'd like to point out, I don't think that, Jennifer, please correct me if I'm wrong, if we elect to hear an appeal, for whatever reason, that doesn't bind us or commit us, it is in no way a precedent for hearing other appeals in the future.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, just one other, two, one clarification, Vince. Is this the first appeal that we've heard?
Yes.
Okay, under this new code. All right, thank you.
Nelson Newter, Crawford-Hoyne Development Partners, 555 Metro Place North in Dublin, Ohio. We are here tonight because of cost. That's the discussion that, as you said, it's the first appeal that we've had in this process. Given that we are already well under construction on three different blocks, we, it's, I think, a testament to the quality of the project that we haven't been back yet, been under construction for a year. We've been through a lot of cost challenges, as costs are up 20% to 30% across the board in all of our projects here in Dublin. And we've done everything we can to pinch here, to pinch there in project in terms of on our financing, so that we could make it work. On the commercial part of the garage, the part that is attached to the garage and screens it, we were able to do something that was not really, needed to be heard by city council, which was removal of residential units on the ground floor of the garage and replacing them with retail units, a more commercial space, which will activate the street, and I think will be a real benefit to the project as a whole. That was a creative means that we went through to try to address the cost overruns on the private development process. The challenge of the parking garage is it's not, they do not generate any income for us. It's not an income generating part of the project. So, it's not as if we can simply raise rent on the people who are parking there. These are free parking garages, free and open, available to the public, and that's the idea. So, we're at a point where we can't come up with additional dollars simply by raising rent. As a result of that, we look at the new community authority that overlays this entire project, and a cost overrun of $700,000 on this garage just simply means that we're going to have to find somewhere else to cut $700,000, or we're going to have to start to make modifications to the other new community authority facilities, be that the interior of the convention space, be that some of the future parking garages, in order to make this work, because there simply isn't anywhere we can go back to the well to find additional dollars to cover this expense. I want to apologize for being here in the first place. We went through the Planning and Zoning Commission process and the city council process with the renderings, and with a decent amount of information we were provided by our contractors and by our design professionals. Design professionals relying on information they had from material suppliers, who are able to create that effect, Amy, that you were impressed with and that you liked, and we liked as well. So, by the time we got approval, we went through the process of bidding out the drawings, we found that the supplier capable of creating that look was in a single-source supplier situation, and they were able to charge their, whatever they wanted to. So, we're in a position now where essentially the, these public parking garages are being taken advantage of because a particular type of material shown on a drawing is the only one that is acceptable. So, that being said aside, we started working, once we recognized the situation many months ago, we started working with Planning Commission to find a solution to this problem that we found ourselves in. And we came up with a beautiful garage. I think if this was, garage was introduced to Planning Commission and the city council first, before we had shown the other version, I think everyone would have loved it and would have approved it. Still costs more than A Garage, more than C Garage, more than any other garage in the region as far as we know. So, it's not a question of cheapening the garage to a point where it's not set apart from other garages in the area. Over on C Garage, we've started the process of installing the panels and lighting them from below, and even though they are flat, I can assure you the effect is incredible. They're parallel with the face of the building, and you're able to see them, you'll be able to see them soon. We've had mockups at quarter till seven in the morning to make sure that we get the lighting effects right. So, we've also gone through the process now on this redesign to fully rebid the drawings as is. It's another reason why it took us a few months to get back in front of everyone, to be absolutely sure that what we were proposing was affordable and that the change to the drawings and the suppliers, what was not going to, we weren't going to be back here again in front of you, saying, we were wrong again, and now here's another design. So, we've been taking as many steps as we can to try to make sure that we've brought forward something that we think is great, is beautiful, is of high quality for the project. And as the owner of 12 buildings right around this parking garage, I have a very vested interest in this looking fantastic for many, many years to come, and I'm wholeheartedly in support of the new design and the new look, and I think it may actually look better, be more durable long-term than the original design. It's just a matter of, the fact that it costs less doesn't mean that it is of less quality. I think that's something that, a leap that we all have to make internally, just because, you know, vanilla ice, one is vanilla ice cream, one is chocolate ice cream, is the best comparison I can make. It's very subjective. It just so happens that the vanilla ice cream costs $700,000 more than the chocolate ice cream. It doesn't make it better. It just depends on what you like.
So, Nelson, thanks for being here.
Thanks.
But the changes that you've proposed, will that save the full $700,000 over the price tag that you were talking about?
Well, the two changes that we are proposing, just simply the change to the skin will make that difference. With the skin as designed, it was the most expensive facade on any building in the project, which I mentioned in the memo. So, more expensive facade than the AC Marriott, more expensive facade than the office buildings, and it just doesn't pass the sniff test.
And so, if you're, if you're, if we decide to hear the appeal, will you come back with additional changes based on the feedback that ART gave you, or will it be the exact same design? So, what, in your mind, what do you think the process would be between now and when we would hear the appeal, if that's what we choose to do?
There's really not any substantial changes that were requested. I think there was a minor, a modification to the randomness of the panels. That would be something that we could change between now and the city council meeting. If that's what was requested by council, we'd be happy to do that. Adding stain to the back of the panels is something that won't be visible on the renderings, would just be visible on the field. So, we'd be up to whatever council would like to see on that.
Okay, so remembering, the only question before us is whether or not we want to schedule this appeal for a hearing, which I'm assuming would be at the next council meeting, which is in two weeks.
Yes.
The, I'm sort of curious, you know, the original design is very cool, very aesthetic, the whole look, and, you know, so that's what's being challenged here, is to be replaced. And I'm just wondering, on the plant wall idea of this, which is a huge amount of maintenance on a garage and very expensive, and I do have a lot of experience with that kind of thing, and, I mean, it's a really nice thing, it's a nice graphic, but it's really a bear to take care of and stuff. If parts of that was deleted, or sections are reduced, and that's what you're asking a reduction to, is it, what's the savings variation, the variable between that and putting, I mean, how much savings is really invested in that?
In just the green wall.
Compared to keeping the original panels, and, yeah, is there enough savings in deleting that? Because that is going to be a forever maintenance nightmare for somebody, and if they're not taken care of well, they end up being really unsightly. I'm just sort of curious.
I believe that the green wall was order of magnitude only about $50,000 or $100,000 of the $700,000 difference. So, the vast majority is tied into the changing of the panels from, again, the single source to one that could be provided by many others.
Who maintains the, to your point, John, the maintenance of the growth, the vegetation? That's probably the community authority, wouldn't it be? Anybody know?
It's our, going to be our association that will be taking care of it with cam charges. So, we have cam charges that are being paid by all the tenants to the property management company that's maintaining the garage, maintaining really the entire project in the grounds.
That's a big cost, I think, over a long haul.
Well, the other thing is, Mike, you know, maybe that could be substituted with some kind of wall mural or tile graphic or something really cool that's not going to die out and have to constantly replace it and water it and place it and water it. I mean, I think it's a neat thing, and maybe in one area where there's a lot of foot traffic, you know, something like that occurs, but I just want to see how much savings there was in that, going back to the original, more, what I think, what Amy said, the more origi, you know, more aesthetic elevation on the building.
Yeah, the vast majority was tied into the panels. I do just want to make a note on the green wall, where it was removed. If we would go with a mural that was full height, we'll be into a situation too where we will not have adequate ventilation in the parking structure, unless it was held off by a fairly dramatic amount. I don't recall exactly what that amount is, but as I said in the memo, the open parking structure designation allows us to not have sprinkler system or ventilation in the garage, which is about $1,000 per space added cost. So, whatever we do with the mural there, if we would just simply go back to replacing the green screen area of the full height with a mural, we just have to see if it was possible to do that with a mural with standoffs and what that would involve, but unfortunately not as easy as just laminating something to the side of the garage.
Thank you, and I think you're being upfront with us, I really do, on this issue.
Thanks.
Any other comment? Chris?
My only comment is, I think it's really important that we support our Planning and Zoning Commission, that these decisions that they make, you know, they certainly had a lot of opportunities to, you know, table something and come back with something different, and as far as I can read from the meeting minutes, that's not part of what happened.
I would move that we hear the appeal. That's not to suggest that I'm inclined to ultimately agree on it, but, you know, given where they are, a year into construction, you know, they have no right to an appeal, but, you know, it just seems to me to be the fair thing to do under the circumstances.
There's a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Anne?
Ms. Ale.
Yes.
Ms. Amheros Grooms.
No.
Vice Mayor Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Saluto.
Yes.
And Mr. Luck lighter.
Yes.
Okay, so will that be, are we saying it's in two weeks, or are we going to, that'll just get published with the rest of these?
That will get published. We'll just need to see what additional information we'll file.
Want to make sure you get all the options for us going forward, et cetera, yeah.
Absolutely.
You know, and I'd like to see almost some examples of what the new material is. I mean, for me to be interested in this, in changing this, the quality of the design's got to be as, it might be a substitute design, but it's got to be a really cool-looking elevation. So, I'd like to see, you know, what we're giving up and what we're getting, and why what we're getting is as interesting as what we're giving up.
And Jennifer, if we can just make sure that that options include whether or not our referral back to P&amp;Z is a legally justifiable option.
I agree with what John's saying, and I'd like to maybe have the materials ahead of time, rather than getting them the night of, so that I can really have an opportunity to let it sink in and think about it. And I also want to be really clear that by agreeing to hear this appeal, it's not that we are saying that what Planning and Zoning did, we disagree with. I think we're just looking to gather additional information to determine whether we want to affirm what they decided, or perhaps not. It has nothing to do with us not having faith in them or not trusting them, at least not from my perspective. So, I want to be very clear about that.
Okay, moving on to adoption of the 2017 regular meeting.
Greg, can I say one more thing about the other? I'd really appreciate if you would bring material samples, big enough that we can see what it is that we're getting, if at all possible. I really want to, I'm a very visual person, and the renderings never do what we're talking about justice, when you, you know, even now, when you go out in the field and you look at what's going up, it just, the renderings were great, but if you could see materials, it's extremely helpful. So, whatever you can bring, I think that would be helpful.
I agree with Amy. I think the spatial differentiation, looks like the original one actually bowed out and was interesting, and the second one that you showed us, the revision, looks like a flat elevation attached to a building, and I'd like to understand that with more clarity, so what we're giving up and what we're getting.
Okay, adoption of 2017 regular meeting schedule. Mike, you going to deal with this? Says right there, it says...
Where does it say that?
It says, "Councilmember Keenan, Admin Chair Leads Discussion." You see that?
I'm in favor of what was presented by staff, with the exception of the National Championship Game in January.
Yeah, can we move that date? I mean, maybe I'm, maybe it's silly, maybe I'm being duly optimistic, but I don't know that we really want to be here on a Monday night.
We can have a better idea. We can always change it back if we don't like it, but...
Yeah, it's hard to get home from the National Championship Game, which we're going to win all in a day.
Agreed.
Try to get back to this meeting, you know what I mean? It's a real stress.
Well, it's not just staff. That's why we have staff that is interested. We have our public that attends the meetings that are interested, so this isn't being, you know, we shouldn't be selfish. That's my view, anyway. Besides that, we do need to put some dates together. Maybe I would ask Anne to send a note around on goal setting, to start that process early instead of waiting until January, get the dates started before our calendars fill up. Beyond that, there are the, there are the reviews. We might be able to piggyback that on to another meeting, or before a meeting or after a meeting, so let's hold off on that for now. But the goal setting's important. Anybody else want to add anything to the agenda that's been presented by staff?
We should go for a February date for goal setting.
Yeah.
I think that would...
Some time in February is good.
Yeah, set that as, you know, a goal, because if we don't, we'll end up at the end of March.
So, try and shoot for some dates there.
I was interested in exploring the July 31st over the July 3rd. I know a lot of folks have family in town and might be traveling to visit family.
Okay.
On the calendar present, our meeting is on July the 3rd.
Yeah.
But there is a substitute day presented as July the 21st, and I'd like to pursue the 21st, or 31st, excuse me.
31st.
31st, yeah, let's do that.
I agree with that. Does anybody disagree with that?
Got no problem with it. I work my schedule around this schedule.
Were we agreement on going with January 10 instead of 9?
Yes.
Okay, and then we're in agreement that instead of July 3rd, we're going July 31st.
Correct. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Anybody else?
Excuse me, so, so then our first meeting in August is when?
14th.
14th. Okay, good.
That's two weeks, yeah.
Yeah. No, I was just thinking in relation to the...
It's a busy month because you have some CIP, yeah.
That actually works better with the last meeting in June, we would be going two weeks in a row, that way. And if we go July 31st, we're still on a two-week pace.
And we always have the discretion to change any of these later, so...
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I got, I might be going out of the country here in November, so I do want to open, keep that open.
Okay.
Cost of change.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting schedule proposed for 2017 with the two changes.
I'll second it.
Okay. You got the changes, Anne?
I do.
Okay.
Ms. Amheros Grooms.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Saluto.
Yes.
Mr. Luck lighter.
Yes.
Ms. Ale.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Staff comments. Michelle?
Just three items to review with council. In your packet was the workshop agenda for October 14th. Just wanted to note that these council workshops are usually from 6:00 to 8:00, but because there are five items on here, a couple that will take some time, we are extending the time of that meeting, 6:00 to 8:30. All these items, we really need to bring forward to council, so if anyone has any questions related to any of these topics, feel free to ask them now, or can reach out to me as well. Second item is, if you've used SnowGo, which is a great online tool for our residents, we've just recently rolled out, or are going to roll out this coming week, LeafGo, a real creative name off of SnowGo. And Megan O'Callaghan is here this evening just to run through this application real quickly.
Good evening, members of council. Today was our first day of leaf collection season for the year, and as Michelle said, we're also rolling out our new LeafGo system. We rolled out SnowGo a couple of years ago, and it's been a huge success. It's really assisted residents with keeping up on the status of our snow operations. So, we've taken the concept of SnowGo and applied it to LeafGo. This system provides residents with up-to-date information. They can go to our website and check on the status of our leaf collection operation. So, it's a web-based mapping tool. You go to our website, and you can click on this logo. The equipment has sensors on it that sends data back to the computer, and that data then is used to assist with updating this map. So, as you know, the city of Dublin, we have a two-zone collection process. So, today we were starting in Zone 1, and because most of the leaves are actually still on the trees, we actually were able to complete Zone 1 today. So, we were very efficient in that regard. So, on the left, you will see the legend, and the different colors mean different things. So, you have, the first color is orange, that means complete, yellow in progress, and brown is not started, so we picked a nice fall color scheme. At the beginning of each week, the entire map will be brown, and then as we make progress throughout the city, they'll turn to yellow. So, wherever the map is yellow, which you don't see now because we completed it, but wherever the map is yellow, that means we're actually collecting leaves, or the collection is in progress. And then, once we're done with a certain area, then it will turn orange. So, we start out by showing the two zones, but then within each zone, there's subzones, and you can see them outlined when you click around the map. And we have 13 subzones, and that's actually how our trucks route around the city. So, if a resident's interested, you could actually click on a zone, and you can see that this area is complete, and it was last reported on the 10th, so that's today, so it was completed today. So, you can not only look and see what color and the progress by color, but then you can actually click on the subzone.
Megan, is, are you going to continue, or are we going to perhaps put a hold on things until we have significant leaf drop?
Oh, we'll continue, because we advertise that this week's the first week of leaf collection. You know, it obviously doesn't take as long, but we did, you know, it helps us to work ahead, because once they do start falling, there's a lot of leaves to pick up, and then it does take us the full week. So, the more we can work ahead, the more efficient our operation can be.
When's the last date? Okay, because you have oak trees that drop really late, and some people have maple trees, and so when's the last date that somebody's going to come out and back?
Our advertised leaf collection program ends December 16th, but we'll monitor that, and in the event leaves are still falling, we'll extend that if needed.
I've asked in the past, I'm not sure it's going to get any traction, but sometimes there's as much as a two-week, there's, it could be potentially a two-week if you miss the last day, the weekend falls until a leaf pickup to your zone comes around. It'd really be nice if there was a spotter, or there was some sort of trailer that could come around to pick up those areas in the really heavily wooded areas. You know, I mean, I told you last year, I follow the directions, put them out on my, between my sidewalk and the street, and the grass has just barely grown back here this summer. It was dead. So, is there any way to capture, you know, those areas that may be way behind just because the way the weekend fell, or...
Well, hopefully, this system, you know, with residents being able to see our progress and where we actually are in the system, that'll help guide the residents as far as when they actually rake their leaves. That's one way.
Well, that's one way, but...
And then another way is by working ahead, that also will help that situation.
I mean, sadly, our schedules don't always line up with your schedule, so...
Yeah.
Wait, isn't it, if you know that your zone is going to be hit that following week, and you rake your leaves that weekend, that means that your zone will get hit either Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday.
Yes.
So, the most your leaves will be on the ground will be five days, six days.
Yes.
Assuming you're home that weekend or whatever.
So, you won't wait, you won't wait two weeks.
I'm just suggesting some of the areas that are really, really heavily wooded, we get lots and lots of leaves with that North Fork of Indian Run, so...
One other feature that you can't see up here in the legend, you see a little truck icon. If we were presenting this during the day, when our equipment's actually out there, you'll be able to see the little truck icons out and around the city on the map.
That'll take care of that.
So, we will be getting the word out about this new tool via our social media and also will be getting the word out about this new tool via our social media and also on our website, and we encourage everybody to go out and check it out.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Megan. How many trucks do we actually have out at a time?
Um, anywhere between four to eight crews, depending how many leaves we actually have to pick up.
Now, the hard part's when you transition from leaf to snow to snow to leaf and back and forth. That's a lot of work for those guys when we have those events, those early snow events.
Yes.
Just one final item. A memo that did not make it in your packet but was in your folders this evening is a new program that we're going to start rolling out called the Yard Squad, and this is a match of residents to, that wish to volunteer and assist other residents that have some need for cleanup in their yards. So, new program we'll announce at the upcoming Homeowners Association next meeting and begin to roll that out. So, there's more detail related to that in that memo. That's all I have.
Let me ask you, how is that reported? Obviously, that's for the sick or the elderly or somebody who can't take care of their property, and how is that reported? I mean, does someone call into the city what department to find out, and maybe their neighbors need help, or?
The matches are made through Volunteer Resources, so if people are interested in assisting or need help or know of someone that may need help, then they can make that call into there, and then the volunteers will report their hours online.
Maybe we could contact all the HOA presidents and let them know this project, even this program is existing.
We will have a, we'll have a plan to roll it out.
Okay, great. Okay, committee reports. P and Z, Amy?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Mike, Admin?
We had our Finance Committee meeting, our quarterly, third quarter today. Pleased to let everyone know that the state of the city is strong, as we heard from Angel Muma earlier. Also, we had a cost of services update, and I understand that legislation will be presented at a future meeting with respect to the increases that we reviewed this evening. That's all I have.
Community Development, John?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Public Services, Amy? Tim, how about your trio of commissions you serve on?
The Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission will meet this Thursday downtown during the day. Logan Union, Champaign County, nothing's happening, other than I think something was in our packet inviting anybody that wants to attend the annual dinner meeting is in November, I think maybe the 19th, but there's something to that effect in your packet. And then finally, the US 33 Innovation Corridor Group is meeting Friday morning.
Thank you, Tim. Dublin Arts Council, John?
Just want to, again, advertise the fact that the 15th is the Bread Festival, and it's going to be awesome. And we're one of the few cities in the United States, there's a few other ones in the United States that have a giant bread festival. But you're going to have a chance, enjoy bread from all over the world, baked by all kinds of ethnic people, and there should be some dipping sauces and other things, and it should really be interesting. So, bread is the staff of life, and hopefully, these are going to be good carbs. So, hope to see you there next Saturday from, and by the way, the Buckeyes are going to be out of town, so get down there and enjoy the Bread Festival. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Board of Education, Chris and Christina?
We will meet again on the 26th of this month. The schools did have their community conversation evening on October the 5th. That was fairly well-attended, and they presented some interesting topics. So, looking forward to what they might be doing with subsequent meetings. This, the focus of this meeting was primarily opiate addiction, but hopefully we'll be having more frequent conversations in the future.
I don't have anything with Washington Township. Dublin Friendship Association, Christina?
I don't have anything since our last meeting.
Okay. Roundtable, Chris?
I tried to catch you while you were at the Mike Megan, and I couldn't catch your eye, but the 161 Riverside Drive roundabout realignment, I do recall when we opened that roundabout that we were looking at a 60-day timeframe to complete the southbound under bypass and things. Are we on schedule with that? It says completion November 16th. I know most of the asphalt plants will probably close roughly the third week of November, and I just wanted to check in and make sure that we're still on schedule. So, we're still looking at 60 days approximately out from when we opened the bounce. Okay, thank you very much. The only other thing is, I had, have received a lot of feedback on the October 4th Historic Dublin Conversation, and most of it was very positive. I think there were some presentations made. Seemed to be that one was certainly more desirable than the other two. I think there were three scenarios. I'm hoping that we can have the opportunity to have another meeting with those same folks once we have identified really the preferences, maybe drilling down a little bit further of eliminating what is not desirable and maybe getting some more information on the things that are desirable. But, thank you for holding the meeting, and I, the feedback I got was that the meeting was very well-attended and that there was a lot of information presented, perhaps more information that could be absorbed in the amount of time, and maybe an additional meeting just on, you know, once we exclude the non-desirables, on the more desirable portion might be worthwhile. So, thank you for holding that meeting. That's all I have.
Christina? Mike? Amy? Tim?
Just quickly, hopefully, in our packet, this was related to the trash recycling can screening. Vince and Ordonea or whoever would like to respond. Under background, the last sentence, it said, "Providing alternatives to natural landscaping would provide more options to ensure compliance." Seemed like a subtle suggestion that we might want to adjust the regulation, maybe? I don't know.
Though, I don't think that was the intent with the memo, other than to do additional research in terms of just what our findings are. As we noted in the memo, over the last five years, there have been about 80 violations, and everyone, all violators voluntarily complied. I think it'll be interesting for staff to progress proactively toward the entire city and see what violations are uncovered this time. So, if those findings, those results lead to any kind of issues for consideration by council, we would bring that forward, but corridor officers will be applying code as it stands today, so we just don't know what we might find in the field. It's been, really, this, I think these, or this requirement has never been progressively applied throughout the city. It's always been complaint-driven. So, the fact that we're doing it this time will be interesting in terms of what results we find, whether that raises any issues or questions for consideration by council. We would bring those forward. We don't expect that, but, but the results will be interesting regardless.
So, is natural landscaping the only type of screening that's allowed?
It is. It is. Hundred percent, all sides by code, either the cans are in the garage or they have to be screened on all elevations to their height with natural vegetation.
Okay. Well, it'll be interesting what your findings are.
Absolutely, thanks.
Before you leave, if I may make a suggestion for your officers, I have a neighbor a few houses down who chose to store their cans outside, and they chose to do the natural screening. And I was a bit skeptical, but it took a year, one year, the screening grew in, and you, it looks like a landscape feature. You don't know those cans are back there. Now, this is a neighbor who's very meticulous about their yard. I expect that they'll probably volunteer for this, because they, they're always out there working on their yard. It's spectacular. But, I'm thinking that if you can look at a few different, if you could photograph some of the success stories and show people so they can see, oh, this is what you're talking about, and give them ideas for plant materials that work well, things like that, so that they understand it's possible to be successful with this, and these are our expectations. You know, this is the goal at the end of this. This is what this is going to look like. And so, they don't go and, you know, buy a little boxwood, $5 at, you know, Walmart and think, okay, well, in five years, you know, this may or may not grow up. You know, and suggestions about how to, I mean, some people don't know how to grow things. You know, you have to water, you can plant it, but then you have to water, you have to tend it a little bit, particularly that first year, and then once it, once it, you know, gets established, it's not a big deal. But, I think that we can build the ability to be successful, and if we're a little more than just code enforcement, but kind of proactively saying, these are, this is what you need to do. Thank you.
Can we just only add that to the website?
Anything else? John?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
We are adjourned.